Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the June 1st, 2021 Post Falls City Council Meeting. Shannon, please note that all council members are present. We have no announcements tonight, but we do have a presentation from Wally Jacobson, the Executive Director of Panhandle Area Council. And I'm just going to say for the record, we are not related.
Yep, I always say that too, Mayor.
Disclaimer, disclaimer.
One of the few. Well, thank you for inviting me to present tonight, just as a, I'll get this teed up here first so I don't get too excited.
At least my mom said we weren't related, Wally.
You always got to go with what your mom says. Yes, my name's Wally Jacobson, and I'm the Executive Director of the Panhandle Area Council. And the city of Post Falls is a member of PAC. Our chairman is Alan Wolfe, who sits right over here. And I think Post Falls has been a member of PAC since the beginning, back in the 70s. So what I thought I'd do tonight was just kind of introduce and reintroduce PAC. Some people know what the old PAC was like, and some people want to know what the new PAC is like. As I mentioned, we are a membership-driven organization. We're a 501(c)(4). Our members are cities, the five northern counties are members, as well as most of the cities in the northern part of the state. We're a 501(c)(4), and we're also an Economic Development District. We're organized, basically, our mission is regional economic development. We've got three parts that we use: business development, economic development, and community development. Basically, on the business side, we do business counseling and business loans. On the economic development side, we do a comprehensive economic development strategy for the five northern counties, and then we also do community development. I found this slide, so I had to throw it in. I don't know, it's five, six years old, but it's kind of like, where's PAC going in the future? I just thought it was kind of interesting, the projects you might note down there. Down on the left is Templins. The middle down below is Ednetics. On the right is Ground Force. You've got Buck Knives up on the left, and you've got the Chamber Building here in the middle, and then you've got ALK. These are all projects that PAC was involved in, either on financing or counseling. But I just thought it was, you know, that's probably the last eight, 10 years, and I think Templins is probably back there from the 80s. Basically, as I mentioned, we've got loan programs. A number of them are SBA, and then we have a number of revolving loan funds. And our focus on funds are for gap financing primarily. If a company needs financing and they can't quite get it from a bank or a credit union, the PAC will come in and partner with the bank to help out there. And our focus is job creation and retention. And I've highlighted right up here, we've got a new RLF fund, revolving loan fund, that we were awarded from the EDA, Economic Development Administration, last July. It's $3 million, and it's basically, we've got two years to get it out. We're up to about almost $1 million to get it out. We've got one more year, and it's basically primarily for gap financing. Just some recent loan activity out there on Pleasant View. Dollar Fulfillment is one of our projects. That's a 50,000-square-foot building. Summit Mold, I just drove by there. It looks like that building's almost done. It started, what, three weeks ago, but it's moving quickly. And we've got a couple others in the wings, too. There's just a lot of activity, as everyone here knows, going on in Post Falls. We also get involved in startups. Just out to the west here is Corlaine Wood. They're a startup company, a couple of guys with good ideas. We're going to take some old wood, and we're going to make it look like old barn wood. You know, they've got all the collateral you ever wanted. They've got like five drills, nothing else. But we took a chance. These guys basically developed an industrial sun tanning bed. And so they started off there in 10,000 square feet, and about six weeks later, they moved into 20,000 out there by Jacqueline. And they've been, they started up in 2015. We helped them with four different loans. They're up to 30 employees, $5 million in sales, I think maybe this year. Home Depot lows. Pretty exciting startup story. So we do get involved with startups with the right story. PAC still is continuing to operate an incubator entrepreneur center out at our facility over by the airport. This is a listing of some of the companies that we've got out there right now. We go from breweries to bakeries to machine shops, you name it, we've probably had it in there. This one here is one of our incubator tenants. This is a light, you go, okay, big deal LED flashlight. This one goes in the flight deck of most commercial airlines. They didn't have a place to actually have a new light or a USB charger, so he developed that. That's being developed over there at the incubator center, and all of these parts are being basically manufactured right here in northern Idaho or in the valley here, which is kind of exciting because most of it was back in the Midwest. We also, as I mentioned earlier, we do economic development planning. Nancy Maybill's here tonight. She's our economic development planner and director, and she's charged with the comprehensive economic development strategy, and we work with Corlaine, EDC, and the other economic development groups. Community development. We're working right now with Post Falls on the raise grant, writing a grant with Post Falls on the raise funds, hoping to be successful there. We've been involved in some broadband training. And then we've recently here, about nine months ago, we received a grant to help with, it's called the Last Item, there's CARES Act Resiliency Grant. Basically, it's to add a component into the economic development strategy that deals with how do we respond to the next pandemic through our SEDs from an economic development perspective? So what we've done is we've hired a consultant, and I say "we," the Economic Development Districts of Idaho came together and actually hired a consultant to put that framework together. So that's kind of exciting, and Nancy's been working on that as well. Infrastructure support, again, we help, and I say "we," PAC, Nancy, and the group helped put together that, one example, block grant for Ground Force. And then I also like to show, PAC is still involved with Empire Airlines. PAC actually owns that hangar facility, and we lease it to Empire, and Empire's still out there doing pretty well. FedEx, and then also, I don't think Hawaiian Airlines is doing so great, but FedEx is, I think, carrying them through, so that's good news. But I always like to point that out because we're always close to maybe expanding out there with those guys. And then PAC, by the numbers, I'll just finish up tonight. This is kind of an overall view here, total grants over the years since the 70s. PAC has written 437 grants totaling up to $235 million in projects. On the loan side, 292 loans, projects of $90 million bucks. And then job creation is about 563. But I wanted to kind of point out here and finish up tonight, the Post Falls area, because I think that's kind of what the focus is with you folks as a member, and hopefully you're getting value from PAC. On the grant side, I think we've secured almost $4 million in grants for the Post Falls and Post Falls area. Out of total project funding on those projects was $48 million. And then on the loan side, we've been pretty active over here in this area over the years. I think there's been about a total of loans of $13 million on projects that valued about $19 to $20 million. So that's kind of what PAC does, and I appreciate the opportunity to present tonight, and I appreciate the city of Post Falls' membership in PAC. Also, I'd also like to mention, not only the membership, but the time. Alan's on the board and spends a lot of time, and then Shelley is on our loan review committee, and we ping them quite hard on reviewing our loans. And in fact, Shelley, another one's coming to you tonight. So we try to keep everybody busy, but it's time-consuming, and I appreciate the effort.
Thanks, Wally. Good information. You've been a good partner for the city, our city, and other cities in the county, and we appreciate the work you and your staff have done. So thanks for taking the time to come and give us a quick update.
You bet.
Are there any amendments to the agenda tonight?
There are none tonight, sir.
Any declarations of conflict, ex parte contacts, or site visits? Seeing them, would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from the May 18th, 2021 city council meeting. Item B is payables, May 11th through May 24th, 2021. Item C is disposal of 2004 Mazda tributes from the engineering department. Item D is the Wells Fargo Commercial Credit Card Amendment. And item C, I'm sorry, item E is contract for sports court resurfacing with Asphalt Pros Incorporated.
Questions on consent?
I've moved to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second. Motion second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolfe?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. We do have three public hearings tonight, and I thought I'd, before we start, I'm just going to maybe mention the, or a reminder of the guidelines. So what we'll have is we'll have the staff report, then we'll have the proponent make their presentation, then we'll open it up for comments from those who wish to testify, both, or both, in favor, neutral, and opposed. Please note, when you come up, if you do wish to testify, you've got to fill out the form in the back, turn it in to our clerk. We will call you up, give you four minutes. We have, in recent past, had people go over the four minutes, want more time. Because of the number of people who wish to testify, we will stick to the four minutes. So if you're running out of time, I will remind you and ask you to finish up your comments so we can move on to the next. Also, I noticed in public hearing the other day, it wasn't ours, it was planning zoning people were calling out from the audience. That is not acceptable, so I would ask that if you wish to testify, we will listen respectfully to you. When that is done, please be respectful back, regardless of whether you're in favor or opposed. Let's show each other mutual, show each other mutual respect. And again, any comments to be made have to be made under the comment section at the microphone. So with that, I will open the first public hearing, and tonight it is the Pleasant View North Annexation.
Hi, I'm Council Bob Seal, Community Development Director. So yes, the first public hearing we've got this evening is the Pleasant View North Annexation Case File ANNX 8-2021. The exhibits that were in the package indicate the owners as the school district, as well as multiple owners throughout the area. The applicant is the city of Post Falls. The request is for a recommendation for a mixture of zoning designations as part of the annexation request of approximately 371 acres, .54 into the city of Post Falls. It went before the Planning and Zoning Commission on 4/27, and the zoning was recommended for approval. So the area that we're looking at, as you can see hatched in red, is a large piece, primarily the area north of Pleasant View, which includes a mixture of zoning types, as well as school district. And there is also a couple, three different owners down to the south. It's approximately 30 acres that is proposing industrial and CCS zoning districts. Those two, those parcels, those three owners down there, those will not be reflected in the following hearings that are for the urban renewal districts. These are outside of the urban renewal district that's proposed, but they felt that the timing was good for them to consider coming into the city. The zoning designations that are being requested, there's 72 acres of the CCM, the new community commercial mixed zone, five acres of community commercial services, that's down near the southern portion, as I mentioned previously. Residential mixed zone of 87 acres, the public reserve, 66 acres, which is the school site. The schools are listed as an allowed use within the public reserve. And then 124 acres of industrial zoning. And since it often comes up as to what kind of housing could we potentially see within the CCM, RM, and CCS zones, we went ahead and put together what is essentially the largest number of units we would anticipate, or could anticipate, within those zones. Granted, these numbers were calculated without the reduction of right-of-ways, or even that, I believe it's 100-foot-wide gas and transmission easement that is through that area on the northern end. So as you can see in the CCM, there is the ability for up to 50% multifamily, which could potentially net 648 units. In the CCS, which would require a special use permit that goes through the Planning and Zoning Commission, has to meet all the criteria associated with that, upwards of 90. The RM zone, which is 87 acres, base multifamily, oh, that's right, the multifamily of potentially up to 313 units, with approximately a base amount of 418 units for single family. And that one, because of the single family, we did take the road deduction within there because those would be public road right-of-ways. But again, this is all just based on big rough numbers that we happen to have because we anticipated that that type of question may arise. So as you can see here, we've got those different zoning designations that are proposed. If we want to start at the bottom, the two gray ones are industrial, and the small red one is a CCS zone. It's kind of viewed as a transitional area in that section. As we get, as we move towards Corbin, we anticipate that Corbin is more going to be along that medium to low-density residential properties. The CCS is a, kind of, could work as a buffer zone between industrial and the residential properties, as opposed to putting residential directly up towards industrial. Up in the northern end, you've got the red is the community commercial mixed zone. The gray, again, is industrial. The yellow is the residential mixed. And then you've got the Post Falls School District on the public reserve property. Within these areas, the city of Post Falls would be designated as a water and sewer provider. Again, providing water and sewer to that district, or to the, to the Pleasant View corridor and Prairie North will ultimately, in order to actually efficiently do so, we would be looking at that urban renewal district which follows in public hearings. The zone change criteria that we would be looking at for this this evening, is it consistent with the future land use map, consistent with the goals and policies that are found in the comprehensive plan? Is the zoning assigned, following consideration of such items as street classifications, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans, geographic natural features? The commercial and high-density residential zoning is typically assigned along streets with higher road classifications, we'd be looking at that. Limited or neighborhood commercial and lower-density residential zoning is typically assigned for properties as they proceed further away from the higher-density urban activity. That's kind of that idea of the potential for, even at CCS possibly. But these are kind of just in general ones. And industrial is typically assigned for properties that are sufficient access to major transportation routes. Again, that Pleasant View corridor is anticipated to be a major transportation route in the future, as it is, will be a connector, and will, is a connector now, between I-90 and Highway 53, and anticipates to be improved over the next few years, inclusion, including with the urban renewal district and development. Some of the comp plan goals that we'd be looking at is to grow and sustain a balanced and resilient economy for Post Falls, providing community prosperity and fiscal health, plan for and establish types and quantities of land in Post Falls supporting community needs, and it'll seize long-term sustainability, and to protect and maintain Post Falls' natural resources, including clean air, soils, river, and aquifer. Comp plan annexation policies, support this land use pattern that maintain and, maintain or enhance community levels of service, foster the long-term fiscal health, maintain and enhance resident quality of life, promote compatible, well-designed development, and implement goals and policies of comprehensive plan as they're related to the master plan and/or facility plans. Annexation policies, annexation north should improve the economic base of Post Falls and assist in creating additional jobs. This annexation we'd see is providing additional housing and commercial activity where future jobs may be located. It'll create, improve roadways with landscaping and pedestrian amenities. Municipal sewer would help protect the wrath from aquifer. The site for the high, the site that the school district owns is intended as a high school site in the not-too-distant future, and it has been seen as being consistent with the comprehensive plan, transportation sewer, and water master plans. Comprehensive plan annexation policies to apply or revise zoning designations with careful consideration of factors, including the future land use mapping, compatibility with surrounding land uses, infrastructure and service plans, existing and future traffic patterns, and the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. And as you can see here, we have the future land use map, as we have indicated previously. The pink is the business commercial type of zoning district that we would anticipate there, and the blue is that transitional. Again, the transitional was kind of unforeseen, it was kind of one of those areas that it wasn't sure exactly how it would develop. With the business commercial, the proposed business commercial category provides a wide variety of general services, retail, professional office, light industrial, mixed uses, that would, local, for local and regional residents. The implementing zones within that typically look at the CCS and the CCM, which are the ones that are proposed along that corridor, up in the northern end. The transitional zone that I, or transitional land use that I had indicated previously. The purpose of that designation is assigned to land suitable for growth. The timing for growth is undetermined, but guidance can be located within the associated focus area. So we kind of look at the associated focus area, which is the West Prairie focus area, and you can see the north-south connector, the arrows there is the Pleasant View corridor, and east-west is the Prairie connector. So within that focus area, the comprehensive plan indicates that a mixture of residential, commercial, and industrial uses are envisioned between Corbin Road and Pleasant View Road. The mixed residential is envisioned between Maguire and Corbin as well. Again, this is kind of just showing, reminding you how the zoning distribution was set up. And it does, and I forgot to note before, that you can see to the south that it shows that there's a Pleasant View, Pleasant View West Annexation was approved in April 2021 for that section of land between Celtees up to the, just south of Prairie Avenue, and that was all zoned industrial at that time. And then as a connection point, in order to connect the southern property and make it contiguous with the northern piece, the county did provide the city with a 50-foot strip of land, that's approximately 7,100 square feet, that runs between that northern parcel and up to the roadway, which made it contiguous for that area, which meets the As I noted previously, the traffic patterns of Pleasant View will be going from the I-90 up to Highway 53. And again, there's a, I believe it's a spewy, that is anticipated to be constructed at Highway 53, approximately 25, 2025 or 2026, as they intend to do construction up there. And that will, once again, create that corridor, make those, creation of that corridor improvements, that will be vital to the area now and in the future. This is just kind of an aerial, showing you, giving you some context of that area at this time. You can see the intersection at Pleasant View, down there at 90, and the intersection northern, northern end of 53, and even includes part of Prairie and Pleasant View. Additional comp plan annexation policies to look at, direct the location of commercial shopping centers to areas near arterial intersections and high-traffic areas, and that's kind of what you'll end up likely seeing, again, as development happens, at the Prairie and Pleasant View intersection area. It ensures that adequate land is available for future housing needs, helping serve residents of all ages, incomes, and abilities through provision of diverse housing types and price levels. Encourage clustering of units in new residential development, providing for service efficiencies and creating opportunities for private and community open space. Consider location of multifamily development in areas that have access to arterial and collector streets, so we're talking about the Pleasant View and Prairie corridor there. Help buffer higher and lower intensity development patterns, but compatible existing uses, and are part of projects involved in mixed use or master-planned areas. Guide the annexation decisions, guided by and considering master plans for the water, sewer, transportation, parks, schools, and emergency services. So those are policies that are master plans that have been created, that do include that area within the Pleasant View corridor and along Prairie. Provision for necessary rights of ways and easements. Studies that evaluate environmental and public service factors, timing that supports orderly development and/or coordinated extension of public services, and meets the, it works along with the comprehensive plan goals and policies. Additional annexation policies that expand the number of local living wage jobs. With the local business community, work can enhance and sustain and, sustain and diversify the local economic base by helping to retain and promote an existing businesses and industries, supportive, supporting innovative entrepreneurial enterprises, coordinating provisions for workforce housing, attracting new businesses and clean industry. This was, these annexations, this annexation was routed to various agencies, as you can see here. Post Falls School District indicated that they remain neutral in a letter to the city and the Department of Environmental Quality. Just note it had general comments for the time of construction. The zone change criteria that you'll be looking at when you are considering the zone for it, is it consistent with the future land use map, consistent with the goal and policies? And these are actually ones that I kind of went over before, but this is kind of here so that we can refer back to it quickly if you want to have something to refer to. So do you have any questions?
Questions, Bob, at this point. Oh, go ahead.
Bob, can you talk a little bit about, number one, let's talk about CCS, CCM, RM, and what's required down the road in order to
Very good.
...develop in those areas? I mean, some things, once we approve the certain zoning, it's a done deal. Some things we approve, and we get the opportunity to, either staff or the council can weigh in on that future development.
Correct. So the CCM and the RM, the community commercial mix and the residential mixed zone, will require the developer to come back to the council through staff with a development agreement. The development agreement will lay out the conditions of how that, how the developer intends to develop it, as well as working with staff to make sure that it is meeting all of the city requirements and city needs for those areas. And at which point, a map is also created, again, through the input of staff, working with them to determine the location, best locations for, you know, that mixture of uses, whether it's commercial or residential, depending, you know, single-family or, you know, multifamily, low-density, medium-density, high-density, whatever it may be, how it will be distributed throughout the site, including the number of units that would potentially be permitted within that area. And again, you know, while there is a certain level that they're potentially allowed to go to within that, it doesn't mean that they will go to that type of limits. The CCS zone, again, if it is of concern, multifamily does have to go through the special use permit that goes through the Planning and Zoning Commission. I don't anticipate it going there at this time. And again, this is, you know, this is a large area of land that services are going to be run to and connected to over the next few, next number of years. This is not something that's going to turn around and get developed in a timely manner. This isn't something you're going to see breaking ground on this area, you know, anytime, you know, soon.
So I'm a little confused on the map. Where is, I see this small piece down below that's indicated as CCS. Is the red up above, is that all CCM?
That's the CCM, yes. That's all CCM.
So essentially, all of the red and all of the yellow, even though we may agree tonight that that's going to be the zoning in that area, before it can actually be developed, it's got to come back through
Correct.
Us.
Yes, essentially, it's a two-step process. Sometimes they can do, we aim for it to be a one-step process so that, so that when they come in with the request for the zoning, they also come in with a development agreement. However, again, this is one that was city-led, and putting that requirement on the developer, the owner of the land at this moment, would have potentially put them into a tougher spot, in the sense that they may not know how they want to develop that land. spot in the sense that they may not know how they want to develop that land. They may have more commercial services that they anticipate seeing due to the current influx in the area than, you know, so that, this way, it gives them the opportunity to actually work out a development agreement as they intend to develop it, because this was something that was a little further down the line for them, but recognizing that it would be coming into the city and with the help of potential, potential help with the urban renewal district, they do intend to come in sooner rather than, or they do intend to develop sooner than they may have developed. This same developer is currently developing in the county within that area. And again, this is just putting on, you know, single-family houses on five-acre parcels that are septic and going into the aquifer. So with annexation, the city would be working in concert with the URA and developers in order to get wastewater and water to that area, so that it's not on wells and it's not on waste, on the septic system.
Timing-wise, there are no, we don't have sewer and water there yet.
Not at this time, no.
So there's no development that's going to happen anytime soon?
It's going to be, it's going to be going through the process of, of design, you know, it is still to be designed, it is still to be determined. Under the next, under the next public hearing, we do talk about some of that timing. There is a short-term plan for a Phase One development, which is intended to essentially get the properties along the southern half with some of, with water availability, as well as the ability to tap into a force main. It doesn't mean that all of them will be able to. There is a long-term plan as well that has a gravity line, and it does, the plans of Phase One do include a lift station to be placed on this property, because it's kind of at a low point on the red property, which would then lift the wastewater and get it to, back down to Seltice.
Ballpark, how soon would that property that we're considering tonight be ready for development?
I think that the only development that we, so we haven't, I don't, it could be three years, it could be seven years.
It's not going to be less than one year.
It could be, it could be longer, depending upon the market. One thing that we do know, though, is that the school district is going to want to try in, in the, in the not-too-distant future, be able to build a high school, at which point, they need to have water and sewer at that location.
I guess I'm just trying to get between, you know, one year or more like three years?
I would say three at the soonest.
Steve, do you have a question?
Yeah, Bob, I have a question. Normally, when we consider an annexation, you put up a little schematic that shows the parks in the area, and this doesn't show a lot of parks. So would that be something that would come later during the agreements with the developers or maybe potentially working with the school districts to develop open space or green space or?
So if I'm, I believe that there is open space requirements within the residential mixed zone, as well as if there is, if there is residential proposed in the CCM zone, there is also the requirement for open space there as well. And I would anticipate, due to the size of these, you would likely see parks being developed within those, and that can be something that gets brought up at the development agreement phase. And no, I didn't, we did not put together that
Yeah.
...buffer line. Because again, we don't know what they're proposing exactly. You know, we will anticipate seeing residential within the residential mix and maybe single-family, maybe a mixture, well, it needs to be at least 80% single-family or this, or that, or of that kind, so.
Because that was my main concern looking at is if we would be looking at maybe trying to develop a park in the area or try to do something with the school district with that amount of acreage.
And I think that that kind of ties together that, and I think that, I wish I had, John's online somewhere, and he knows the percentage of open space that's required with the RM zone.
It's either seven or 10, I know that.
I think it was seven is what I was thinking. That's why it was, that's what I was thinking it was, but.
But in short, basically, that will come forward with
That would come through the agreements later.
John is available to speak.
John, you want to weigh in? Tell us how, what the acreage is, Mr. Wolfright?
Yeah, so the residential mix does require 7% open space, as well as any multifamily that may develop in the CCM. There is 150 square feet for each one-bedroom and 300 square feet for each two-bedroom in, in above, and it does accumulate to some significant acreage of open space. But like that was stated, a lot of this would come into clarity at time of development agreement to come before city council at a later date.
Thanks, John. Okay. Any other questions, Bob? Thank you, Bob. Before I call for public comment, I just want to note that I received a text that Channel 1300, which is the channel that this, these meetings are broadcast on, is down, they can't even get a message up, and they are broadcasting it, streaming it on Facebook, but I've also been told that they're having issues on Facebook as well. So just in case questions come up, it's, we're aware of it. So, people wishing to testify? In favor, does not wish to speak, is Rob Heskett, in favor for economic benefit to Post Falls. In favor, not wishing to speak, Taylor
Varney.
Varney? Thank you, I figured I would mispronounce it. I'm in favor of annexation and further job creation, thank you for the consideration. In favor wishing to speak, Dennis Williams. Mr. Williams, when you get up, please give your name for the record, and your timer is on the podium here.
Hi. All right. Hey, Dennis Williams, CEO, President over Trans System. We're a trucking company located in Spokane, Washington currently. We have been in business for 49 years today.
All right.
The company was founded by my father, Jim Williams, 1972. Today, we have a flatbed trucking company called System, a refrigerated trucking company called TDPT, and a bolt company called James J. Williams. We're hoping to, that you vote in favor of the annexation for Post Falls for us. We're hoping to relocate. If we were to do that, we think we'd bring 200-plus good-paying jobs to the city of Post Falls, and we think we'd be a really good tenant. Not only would we bring jobs to us, but also we use a bunch of services and vendors that we hopefully could convince to come to Post Falls with us. In addition, we use a lot of services. We use a lot of hotels for like truck drivers, and we also use a lot of restaurants to come. We've supported in Spokane a lot of different, different charities through the years. Second Harvest comes to mind. We've supported Bloom's Day, two fests of it, so, and we really look forward to being a really good tenant to the city of Post Falls. So looking forward to a favorable vote. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. In favor wishing to speak, Rick Peterson.
My name's Rick Peterson. I'm the district manager for Kenworth Sales Company. I just wanted to talk about, the reason why I'm here is to, on behalf of Kenworth Sales to totally support the proposed annexation. Kenworth Sales Company currently has seven locations in the state of Idaho, and with the, with moving into Post Falls, it would be eight. Now, I remember somebody making a comment that it only took us eight times to get it right.
I think it was God's country.
That's what it was. But what I'd like to tell you is, you know, we were originally planning on, we were originally planning on putting a location here in Post Falls or Coeur d'Alene area just for parts only. And to do that, you know, we would sell parts to customers that anywhere's from the, from the Post Falls side all the way over to Coeur d'Alene up to Ratham, Sandpoint, and all of that. And that would be some annual part sales of about $2.5 million. With our major customer considering moving to Post Falls, we committed to a complete full-service facility. Having said that, we purchased 10 acres, with service labor sales of 200, $2.8 million annually, body shop labor sales of 1.2 million annually, truck sales $35 million annually, with a total sales estimated around 46, or 45.6 million, as compared to $2.5 million of parts only that we were going to do. We also would employ 35-plus people instead of probably just five, if it was only parts The next part I'd like to talk about is, we did purchase, two and a half, three years ago, 23 acres over in Spokane out by Amazon. We still own that property, we're still going to build a facility out there, it was just a matter of what size we were going to build. And in this particular case, we decided to delay that project because our facility in Spokane is getting old, and we decided to delay that project and build a facility over here. And in doing that, it remains on track that we're still going to build out in Spokane, but now it's just a matter of what does Post Falls take away from what the Spokane facility would originally do, and so what size of facility, what business model would we put in over there? Annexation, I think, is, is very important to us in order for us to support our businesses it's currently designed. And the design is that we are a full-service dealer, that's parts, that's service, that's body shop, that's sales. Again, 40, $45.6 million annually in sales. And, you know, I, I just want to say it's very important to us that, you know, we, we don't want to have to change our business model. We've already started construction, as probably most people know, and we don't want to have to change that if we, if our big customer doesn't come over this direction. So we still have the property out there, we're still going to build out there, hopefully it's just going to be built somewhat the same size as what we're building here.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson, all I have. Appreciate it. Next wishing to speak in favor, Ginny Gilliam.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson and City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Ginny Gilliam, the President and CEO of the Coeur d'Alene Area EDC. I represent the 30 members of the Board of Directors, which include representatives from local businesses, education, and local government. We fully support the annexation of the Pleasant View Urban Renewal District, which will provide numerous benefits for area residents, the city, North Idaho, and the state. We also support the downtown district, though most of my comments refer to the Pleasant View URD. The proposed Pleasant View URD will help create jobs to help improve
Ginny, can I interrupt one second? Are we one hearing early on these comments?
Yeah, we're early on the urban renewal comments.
Oh, okay. So just annexation.
This is just annexation, so if you want, we'll, we'll call you back up in the next one? Or do you want to?
Is it the next one?
It's the next one, if you want to speak on that.
Okay, we'll do that then.
Okay, thank you. Wishing to speak in favor is Len Crosby.
Good evening, Mayor and Members of Council, I'm Len Crosby. My address is 1209 South Riverside Harbor Drive, Post Falls. I am speaking in support of this annexation. Pleasant View Corridor has been looked at by the city and many of the city agencies for probably the last 10 years as being an opportunity for our community to develop a prime, a prime commercial and industrial area, to expand our economic development and to add to job creation. The developer of the, the majority of the property in the northern section is a known quantity. Copper Basin's been in our community for almost 25 or 30 years. They've developed in North Idaho and Eastern Washington. They're headquartered right here in Cootin County. They took the failed Tullamore development and created some of the more affordable housing we have in our city and made it a success. I also want to echo the, the questions about the environmental impact of that area. If it's not annexed into the city and sewer and water provided, will continue to develop into five-acre lots with sewer and water being dumped into the aquifer, sewer being dumped, sewage being dumped into the aquifer and water being taken out. And we do think that's an important issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crosby. Next wishing to speak in favor, Deana Nakarado.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Members of the Council. My name's Deana Nakarado. I currently serve as the Superintendent of the Post Falls School District. I'm here to speak in favor of annexation of Pleasant View into the city because we desperately need services to our school site. I think most people are aware that in Idaho, taxpayers bear the cost of building new buildings. Without water and sewer in this area, the cost to our taxpayers will increase exponentially. With the growth that we're experiencing in our city, it's only a matter of time before we need another high school, and Idaho and Kentucky are the only two states that require a supermajority in order for us to make that happen. So, the school district's position is that by annexing, we'll actually save taxpayer money when it comes time to build another high school. Thank you.
Thank you. In favor wishing to speak, Julie Holt and Christina Pettit.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson and Members of the City Council. I am Julie Holt, and I'm the Chair this year for the Post Falls Chamber of Commerce Board, and with me is Christina Petit, who is the President and CEO of the Post Falls Chamber. On behalf of the Chamber and our board, I want to express our support for the Pleasant View annexation. The proposed plan for public improvements along the Pleasant View Corridor will open that area of our city to light and heavy industrial development, creating good-paying jobs with benefits, and diversifying our economic base. The area currently has the road and rail connections that many manufacturing companies are seeking, and the improvements proposed in this plan, including a transload facility and the extension of sewer and water infrastructures, will greatly improve North Idaho's competitive position for new economic development. Plus, it includes the Post Falls School District property we will need services to in about seven years for a new high school. Without the annexation and the extension of city utilities, the school will not be able to build the high school they expect to need. Thank you for allowing us to speak, and thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you. Wishing to speak in favor via Zoom, I'm going to butcher the name, Ben?
Dufel?
Looks like Wharton.
Wharton?
Is it Ben Wharton?
Oh, Ben.
Ben?
The other Ben, there's two of them.
There's two Bens.
I'm sorry.
Do you know which one it is, Shannon?
Is it Ben Wharton? Let's go with Ben Wharton.
Ben Wharton's their consultant.
He's a consultant?
Yeah.
And is he wishing to speak on Zoom?
Probably not on this one. He's an urban renewal consultant.
The next one, not this one.
Thank you. I'll move you aside, too. Wishing to speak in favor via Zoom is, is Dan or Don Taylor?
Dan.
Dan Taylor?
There we go. Yeah, I'm with Western Trailer, I represent Western Trailer Company out of Boise. We've recently purchased property also in Post Falls. System Transport is a big customer of ours. We will be building a new facility in the next three years in the Post Falls area next to Kenworth. Our annual sales in that, out of that branch run about $20 million a year out of Spokane right now. We're going to bring 35 to 40 good-paying jobs into the valley, and we have people that'll be looking for homes. So we are definitely in favor of this annexation.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
No, thank you. And that was, we didn't ask him to give his name, but for the record, again, Dan Taylor. Wishing to speak in favor again via Zoom is Patrick Deptula? Hopefully, I didn't butcher that too bad. Patrick?
Oh, that was perfect. Thank you. Can you all hear me?
We can, thank you.
Great. Patrick Deptula, I'm Vice President of Pilot Travel Centers. Obviously, we have a business there in Post Falls and enjoy it very much. My compliments to the staff for putting great points together in their due diligence process. I think this is a great move in annexing the area. I think this is a great move in annexing the area. Infrastructure has become so valued and really in dire need in that area. And, you know, solid-paying manufacturing jobs, US-based jobs. In fact, I just, I don't see any negatives to this, so definitely greatly in favor of this annexation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wishing to speak in favor via Zoom, Rick. Is it Sheffield?
Yes, Mayor, you did great. Well, thank you, and I'll just take just a minute. I actually am here definitely to speak in favor of this proposed annexation, but in particular, just talking about Trans Systems and their move to the area. They have been a customer of ours for thirteen years and a family-owned, safety-focused company, and I think they would be a great asset to the area, as well as obviously, I think they'd be very beneficial to our business as well. So we definitely support it, and we appreciate your time and listening to me.
Thank you, sir. Wishing to speak in favor, Ryan Robinson via Zoom.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Ryan Robinson with Pilot Travel Centers. We would be absolutely honored for this proposal to proceed forward. I think it's an excellent opportunity to bring some further development into the Post Falls area.
Thank you very much. In favor wishing to speak via Zoom, Stacy Stanley.
Good evening, Stacy Stanley, Real Estate Manager at Pilot Travel Centers. I'm excited for Post Falls to have this opportunity to just improve the area, improve the tax base, make things easier for the school development in the future, and of course, for the existing buildings, businesses to expand. I'm fully in support.
Thank you very much. And last, I believe wishing to speak in favor via Zoom, Trent Schwenkfelder?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, my name is Trent Schwenkfelder. I represent Commercial Tire. We're an Idaho-based business. We have forty-some locations, and we are looking to add a new location in Post Falls. So we would definitely be in favor of that annexation.
Thank you very much. We have nobody, no one wishing to speak neutral, and we have in opposition Harlan Schlenker. Is Harlan here, or are we just reading it in?
You're just reading it.
Reading it in. Comments regarding Pleasant View annexation. "It should be specified how many dwelling units will be built before considering moving forward with this. Developers say one thing and then want to change it later. Council has become reckless with annexations and development at the cost of the public. Number two, how can this rural property even be considered to be in with urban renewal? This area couldn't get further away from downtown, could it? Is this a ploy to enable future annexations and development? Prove me wrong." In opposition, Melanie Kelly, and is this another read?
Yes.
"Do not agree with doing the annexation of the three-hundred-and-seventy-five acres off North Pleasant View. There is already large growth in Post Falls, and there is not enough schooling, water, and sewers, another issue. The large amount of traffic and the roads in that area are not equipped for that whole, that amount of homes going in. My husband and I live on Fisher Avenue, and since there has, since there has been all the homes going up on the east side of Fisher and the roundabout on West Prairie Avenue was put in, our road has lots of traffic and people tearing up and down the road to avoid the roundabout. Had two trucks hit on, had two trucks hit onside late at night, and no one was caught. There is already more growth than Post Falls can handle. I'm sure the money coming into the city is nice, but so are the people being happy. We like living in the country area with little traffic and having our animals." In opposition, not wishing to speak, is Ray Gregonis?
Gregorius.
Gregorius? Thank you. Wishing to speak in opposition, Bob Flowers. Bob, I got two from you. Is one for this, one for the next? Thank you.
Good evening, Bob Flowers. I have no problem with our going down Pleasant View. My problem is with Prairie, going north of Prairie. As Councilwoman Thorson stated at your last meeting, Prairie is a mess. It's an absolute mess right now. There is too much traffic on it, and you want to put more apartment buildings as well as commercial. Now, these gentlemen that spoke before, I respect every one of them. Their companies are good. They've been here forever. I love seeing them here. The Kenworth people are already building. The trucking company, well, they'd be facing Pleasant View, not Prairie. But I think my biggest argument about this north annexation is the way the city so-called became connected to the South by making a deal for an easement of-
Excuse me, it's not an easement. It's a separate parcel, and the county gave that parcel to the city because they support this annexation. So just make sure you know it's not an easement.
Okay. Well, I was told it was an easement at first, but I don't consider that connected to the city. I believe you broke your own rules by trying to go north of Prairie. I just, I just don't believe it's right. And those homes up there that are built along Prairie, those nice five-acre parcels up there, are suddenly going to get inundated with so much traffic that they won't know what to do. We could figure out a different way of getting water and services to that school property without bringing in everything else that you're trying to include into this. There is a way of doing it. We just haven't figured it out yet. That's all I have.
Thank you. That's the end of public comment. We need a rebuttal from Mr. Seal.
Bob Seal, Community Development Director. I just kind of wanted to make a note in regards to a couple of the comments that were made against the application, is that the max number of units were noted in the presentation. We kind of looked at some of those as to what the very maximum number of units we anticipated seeing or could anticipate seeing. Again, as this area, you know, develops, if it were to develop up there north of Prairie, there are, there is, again, that commercial services or the commercial mix zone there that we would anticipate seeing commercial services. Within any influx of housing that were to go up there, you would likely see those commercial services being developed in concert with that in order to provide services. You know, it's not that much further from ninety than if you were over at Prairie needing to get down to Super One along the Idaho or, you know, Spokane Street routes. But we do, would likely to see commercial development at that intersection because it will be a higher traffic intersection, the Prairie and Pleasant View Corridor. And again, as somebody noted with the traffic, potential traffic accidents, we will be seeing, you know, improvements to the roadway system and traffic control put in as development happens. And there are plans for intersections along Pleasant View and improvements to even that roundabout and, you know, some of that north-south connector. And again, potentially, if there, if, you know, this is approved and if the urban renewal district is approved, that is the route that funding will likely be developed in order to implement the transportation improvements and water and sewer, as well as the city is searching out grant opportunities.
Thanks, Bob. Mr. Wilson?
So we had one person who just handed in a sheet that would like to speak in opposition. This is, we're into rebuttal, so that's up to you whether you want to allow this person to speak or not.
If we allow, we'd have to ask Mr. Seal if he wanted to rebut.
Yeah, he would get an opportunity to rebut this testimony.
Okay. Okay. But if anyone wishes to speak at any of the other public hearings, please get your notices in prior to the start.
Can we just call his name?
Yeah, he's right here. Please call his name.
Oh, did you close it already?
I've closed it.
Tyler Emery.
Tyler, please come up. Name for the record, please.
This is much appreciated. My name's Tyler Emery. I live at 14578 West Prairie Avenue. I'm, I'm coming up to talk about transportation planning. I mentioned this at the annexation hearing, and this is something that I think, before we take steps forward with the full annexation, I really do feel strongly that Post Falls and the greater Cootin County needs to do a modeling master plan. My time at Washington State Department of Transportation, we did a lot of modeling for even simple construction projects to see these impacts, knowing that one construction project, just on Sullivan Bridge, for example, impacted not only emergency services, but also impacted city streets, alleys. We went through, we modeled, we counted cars, we began to watch all the crazy things that people did when traffic was impacted. I've continued to hear these things that say, people say things, is we anticipate this type of traffic, we anticipate this will fix this. My question is, do we know, we're betting on the fact that widening Prairie all the way down is going to fix all of our problems? That seems to be the answer. What if it doesn't? What happens when we zone this? We build it out? We build out Prairie? Coming in after the fact is hundreds of millions of dollars. Look at what Spokane's trying to do with the north-south corridor. They're still fighting to get that freeway through, and they're still running semi-trucks right down the middle of Division because they didn't do the planning in the beginning. And that's really, I think, where we need to take a step back and say, what, what is this, what is happening? You build these models, you verify them. As the growth develops, you go out and you verify, is the prediction that our model is making, is it actually, is it actually working with what we're seeing in traffic plant, that what the traffic's doing? And if it's not, then you go back and you adjust your model, and you keep moving this model and adjusting so that when this gets all done, we don't go, oh, no, now we've got to come through and buy people's houses again, knock down houses, look along I-90, they're doing the same thing over there in Spokane. Now is the time to do this kind of planning beforehand. And I think we need to take a step back with this annexation and do some modeling, and I think that ought to be, the modeling for that and water and sewer and these kinds of things ought to be the drivers for whether or not we should put this many units in there. I'm also concerned with, there's a certain amount of green space that's allowed there. Is this green space that going to be underneath the 500,000-volt power lines? How far, how close are the children and the residential houses going to be to these 500,000-volt lines? There's a lot of data around that with, related to fertility and all kinds of issues as well. This is not the prime optimum area that you want to put a high-density residential in right next to and along it. So I know I was late, so thank you. I appreciate your time and for listening to me. Have a good night.
Thank you, sir.
I think there's one more on Zoom, maybe.
Yes.
I don't know who it is. Maybe Shannon.
Catherine Berg.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can, go ahead, and name for the record, please.
I did not hear you, sorry.
Yes, we can hear you. Your name for the record, please.
My name is Catherine Berg. I'm at 14897 West Prairie. I thought I had registered earlier today to talk, so I'm sorry if I came in late. I'm opposed to the Pleasant View North annexation. I have a home with my husband. We're on the north side of Prairie, just east of the annexation, and I would like to say that none of the approval letters are from residential property owners along Prairie The development of, seems to be all to the advantage of the business and the city of Spokane, oh, sorry, city of Post Falls. It's disheartening to hear the city basically tell us that we wasted our life savings on building our home on five acres, as they did at the planning commission. Now we're being told that there's going to be 418 houses on the eighty-seven-acre parcel around us, where we had planned on there being twenty. I'm not sure if the 418 houses is accurate, and like Tyler said, you've got a power line and gas line running through there, so you're going to take out some of the eighty-seven acres. Imagine that will be the open space, and they'll condense all the other building around I guess, what I'd like to say is the development along Pleasant View, that makes sense. The business and the industry along Pleasant View makes sense. Pleasant View connects the north to the south, you're right, I-90 to 53, and that seems to make sense. It doesn't border, I think it borders one residential property, which, and I believe that person was in favor of it, so. I have two concerns for this, for our properties, and that is the traffic, like Tyler said, along the road. It's not addressed specifically in this annexation plan, and I'll say it's not addressed specifically in your urban renewal district plan, or whatever that's called, other than being a vague Prairie-North expansion. I will say, too, that something that just dawned on me is what you're going to have is trucks heading down Prairie from Pleasant View going over to 95, trying to bypass your scales. I don't know what plan you have for that. My other concern is our water, the property directly to the west of our property, which lies between us and Corbin Road, has a wellhead on it, and that well services four properties on this side of Prairie with residential water and with irrigation water. I'm not sure what's going to happen to that. Again, that's not addressed specifically. I know it only impacts four houses, but I need to know what I'm going to do about water once that's gone. The only thing it does say is that that goes away when it's developed, so we won't have access to that. So that's kind of concerning. I will also say that your, the school district development on Maguire and Prairie would be better served bringing the water and the sewer up Maguire that's already there. It's a shorter distance than going all the way down to Pleasant View and up to Prairie and over. And I think there's a plan that I can address, maybe when we get to the development stage, but I'd like you to consider, if at all possible, not doing residential mix. That's the, that's what's going to bring the congestion and the-
Ma'am, your four minutes is up. Could you wrap up your comment?
I would like you to consider making an R1 instead of a residential mix.
Thank you, ma'am. That's the end of comment.
I believe so.
Mr. Seal, would you care to rebut the last two?
Well, Bob's coming up. I would like to point out, there was a comment that we broke our own rules regarding connectivity to this property. What the Idaho statutes require is that the property touch at least one point. The requirement is that the property become what's called a J-Center contiguous. Here, we have a fifty-foot overlap that touches its owned-in fee, so we've fully complied with what the Idaho Code requires for connectivity for the development, for the annexation.
Thank you.
Seal. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. In terms of the traffic, traffic planning, we do, obviously, do traffic master plans, as does the Cootin Metropolitan Planning Organization. The city will be going out, as kind of noted actually in the last meeting we had, we will be going out in the next year to do an update to our transportation master plan. And currently, the master plans are modeled out to the mid-2040s, 2045? 2040, okay. So currently, they are modeled out to 2040, and they are updated at least every five years. Both the city as well as KMPO would do that. So that modeling has been done for the current, current plans, and it will be done again as they look to the future, as how development has changed or plans have changed. In terms of the green space, green space will be, open space will be determined and decided at the time of the development agreement as to the location of that green space, typically under easements such as that. No construction is permitted within those areas usually, and it will be in coordination and discussion with city staff, as well as, again, back to the city council when it comes to that development agreement phase. And that will address the mixture of the housing types, density levels, green space, ingress, egress to the sites for those residential mix and commercial mix zones. In terms of the wells that are set aside for existing sites, those won't be touched. Those are not intended to be, you know, if they're serving existing homes, water rights are for the, are given up for those larger properties. are for the, are given up for those larger properties that would be coming into the city, and city services will be coming down that way. And when it comes to the location of that sewer and water lines, the last woman noted, she thought that it would be better going up Maguire. The master plans show the direction of, the typical direction of the flows, having to utilize the grades to determine that and determine, you know, the size of the flow that would be going to it. In addition, the city does not typically provide city services to something that is not located within the city limits. That's why the annexation is part of this whole process, so.
Any questions?
Questions, Bob?
Thank you.
Close the public hearing. Council, who'd like to start?
I'll start. Well, like a lot of people have said, I was, I've always been in favor of development along Pleasant View. In fact, when I ran for the seat, that was one of the things, I wanted jobs and I wanted them along Pleasant View. I thought that was a perfect place to have them. So this, the first annexation that we approved fit right into what I had always pictured for Post Falls. This annexation never was quite part of that plan. I was concerned about having R1 or, you know, our mixed uses out there, until we decided as a council sometime ago to develop or create these mixed-use zones. One of the things I always disliked, sitting up here, was being told that, that I couldn't make a decision, that it was already set in stone, that if this property was already zoned CCS, there was nothing I could really say about it. If this property was zoned R1, there was nothing I could say about it, even though it may have been done a long time ago. Tulamore comes into play, Fieldstone comes into mind. These were all developments that were planned out, they all looked good, and then they didn't always come to fruition. But what I really like about this annexation and the zoning that goes with it is the fact that we created the commercial mixed and the residential mixed. Because what that does is it doesn't bind this council or a future council, because it's not probably going to happen for two or three years at the earliest. But some council in the future is going to be able to sit and decide what is actually going to happen on that property. It's not going to be decided tonight. And a lot of what the people in opposition have said is, you know, we're pushing this, we don't have the plan in place. I appreciate Mr. Emery, I think he's right on, we do need to do some planning, but this is the type of thing that we've got time to figure this out. It's going to take a couple of years to get the infrastructure in place, so if there are issues on Prairie, if there's going to be issues on Pleasant View, we can work some of this stuff out prior to the actual construction going on, on this particular annexation. I think that the roads that are there are where, you know, the type of roads that we want for this type of development. I like what's going to happen on Pleasant View, and I think that when it comes to responsible growth, this is a good example of what we have done as a council and as staff especially to prepare ourselves for exactly what we're being asked to do tonight. And I think we've done the work, we've done the feasibility studies, we've done the meetings, we've done to ask the questions, we answered the questions, and I think this is a good project, and I'd like to see it move forward.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to comment?
I will, I will echo Mr. Wolf. I think it is an excellent fit for our town. I think it's a long time coming, and I believe what Al said, we created these zones and we're not deciding tonight what's going in there per se, but absolutely, I think, I think it's a perfect fit out there.
Steve.
I have to agree. I think staff has kept us informed of this all along the way. This hasn't been just a process coming up tonight, it's been a long process, and the council's had input all through this process. And I think since we first started and what's come to us tonight, it's been massaged a little bit. So I think it works out good. That corridor is perfect for what's proposed between I-90 and Highway 53. The companies moving in are first-class companies, I think they'll add to our community. The school district, we'll need, anytime we can help the school district out and their financial needs, and you don't want 600 kids out there on sewer, or probably, the way it's going, it'd be 2,000 kids for a high school now, so. So I think, I think it fits all the criteria we look at. Again, the modeling, this gives us time. Our transportation plans are changing continually, our staff's looking at them, and I think, as Al said and everybody said, this isn't happening overnight, but we have a chance to plan it and make it right for the future. And there'll be another council up here that'll probably make some of the other decisions in a few years, so I support it.
Joe?
This one, as has been mentioned by a couple, has, has really gone through a pretty big transformation from when, you know, we first started talking about it in workshops a couple of years ago. The biggest selling points for me that have ended up in this final plan has been, as I spoke about earlier, is jobs that people can make a living at. We have companies ready to come in, some have already started building, and they can do more being on sewer and water than they can on separate. They can still build and county, they can still operate, but they can be bigger, offer more jobs if we annex all the property in. So I think that's a big win for us. The industrial property up by the railroad and Highway 53, I think is prime real estate also to bring more jobs in, and I think that's something that Post Falls needs. I'm like a lot of people who live in Post Falls, I commute to Spokane every day to go to work. I would love to have the opportunity to find a really good job here, and there just aren't that many. So I'm hoping that there are some opportunities for, if not for me personally, but for others, to be able to find good jobs in Post Falls and cut down on the commuting. The school district, man, we need another school in a big way. And the fastest way to get that school open and up to maximum capacity is by this proposal, by annexing it into the city, by having the other development, commercial and residential going on. We can pay and get the sewer and water up there as fast as we can, and I don't think we can do it fast enough. Just the rate of growth, we need one badly. The, the part that's, you know, kind of a, somewhat of a downside is the higher-density residential. Of course, people are moving in like crazy here. We've got a higher percentage of R3 than we've had in the past, since I've been on the council anyway. And I did a lot of thinking on this, and we've got, on the south side of Prairie Avenue, we've got the solid waste transfer station. There's a high school going in on the east side of the parcel, industrial going in on the north side of it, commercial going in on the south and west. So as a developer, if I put myself in their shoes, what, what can you sell on land surrounded by those uses? And you're probably not going to be looking at one-acre big houses, you're going to be looking at lower-value-type housing. So I am happy to see it's not R3. It is still a higher density, which, man, as fast as we're growing, it kind of, that's a little bit tough for me to swallow, but with the carrot, is the increased jobs with proponents that are ready to move and the school, I think that that far outweighs the stick. So, that's my opinion.
Okay.
I would, oh, go ahead.
Okay.
Well, because it is on Pleasant View, and I'm trying to remember how many years ago Jim Watson had a dream for Expo.
Close to 30.
Yeah, is it that long? I was going to say 20, but I was thinking it was longer. So nearly three decades ago, this kind of development is what has been discussed and envisioned for that corridor. And so, for all of the reasons, all of the reasons that all of you have said, that I won't, I won't repeat, the industrial part of this benefits from all of the rest of it. So it is, one without the other absolutely wouldn't make sense, but Pleasant View, that corridor, and the opportunity for industrial and, and good jobs are only going to be enhanced by the rest of that. So I would be in favor of it.
Lynn.
I just think that it's a great fit for that area. We've talked about industrial and the fact that a lot of our industrial or previous industrial zone land is disappearing, and I think we did a lot of hard work to kind of develop this corridor and look at that early on to make it a good fit for industrial use, and obviously that's come into fruition, and I think it's a great fit for us.
Thank you, Lynn. Join one more comment.
Yeah, a couple of comments I forgot. Another one that came up a lot was traffic. The biggest driver of traffic by a long shot, I think, in this development is going to be the school. And that, for better or worse, needs to happen anyway. So, to Mr. Flowers' point, I agree that Prairie is really busy, and as I've said in the last couple annexation hearings, we don't need, we need to minimize the number of connections into Prairie. The good news about this property is, hopefully I'm still on the council when it comes to development, but there's certainly opportunity to have access only from Pleasant View and from Maguire, and leave Prairie alone. So, because there is that opportunity, then I hope that we have a chance to take a look at that when the development comes.
Yeah, my thoughts on it is, this is a very unusual annexation request, and the city is the proponent. You know, we're, we are blamed, accused, or charged with going out and annexing everything we see in sight. And I've always told people, but the city's not the one requesting those annexations, it's property owners bringing those annexation requests to the city. In this case, I think it makes sense for the city to be the proponent. I'm thrilled to have Kenworth under construction, the other companies. You know, we met two years ago, probably, and with a group of CEOs from these companies, and they said, if this company's coming, we're coming as well, and we're seeing that. So I think annexing this into the city, providing the water and the sewer, being able to improve the roads, is a huge win for the city of Post Falls. And, you know, I want to thank those who are investing in our community, and I want to thank staff for the job you have done in bringing this forward, because again, it is unusual in that it is the city who is the proponent in this annexation, so. Linda, I think you had a motion?
Yep, I would move to approve the Pleasant View North annexation, file number ANNX-0008-2021, Zone CCM, RM, CCS, industrial, and public reserve.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Porson?
Aye.
Boy?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Following that is another public hearing that pertains to it, and that's on the Pleasant View Urban Renewal Plan Revenue Allocation Area. With that, I will open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Diane Fountain, Director for the Post Falls Urban Renewal Agency, and before you tonight are two urban renewal districts for your consideration. First, I'll give you a brief history of urban renewal in Post Falls, and then I'll move into the necessary steps to form an urban renewal district. Following that, we'll go into each of the urban renewal districts separately. I just don't want to duplicate what I'm going to say, so I'll explain things first and then we'll move into the urban renewal districts. Our mission is to encourage sound economic and community improvement that enhances the overall quality of life in Post Falls by providing and improving infrastructure, attracting jobs, and enhancing citizen safety and health. The agency was created in 1991 and has since opened eight urban renewal districts. We have closed four of those urban renewal districts successfully, and they have been closed early. The Urban Renewal Commission has proven to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars by returning over $726,000 remaining increment back to the taxing entities upon closure of our districts. We have also provided two excess rebates from the East Post Falls District totaling $5.4 million. Urban renewal and tax increment financing are the most significant tools available for attracting businesses and economic development, promoting job creation, and encouraging development of blighted and underutilized areas. When an urban renewal district is created, the value of the land is determined as the base value. Those monies still go to the taxing entities, and when development occurs, the increase in valuation is increment, and the taxes collected are remitted to the agency, which we use those monies to reimburse for the public improvements. Upon closure of an urban renewal district, the increased property values or new development is available for the taxing entities to include in their operating budgets. In May of 2020, we started holding bi-weekly meetings with city staff to discuss both the Pleasant View and the downtown districts. For additional transparency, we added Appendix J to these plans, which lists the public meeting dates where discussions took place regarding these urban renewal districts. It's important for me to note that funds received by the agency for a specific urban renewal district must be spent in that district. The agency does not receive taxes generated by voter-approved levies, such as supplemental school levies and voter-approved bonds. Increment can only be expended for the benefit of the public, and the agency cannot grant tax money to private interest for development. Next, I will move into the necessary steps to form an urban renewal district as required by Idaho Code. When we get to the individual districts, I will only highlight the requirements by noting specific dates and actions. First, the district boundaries are established, then an eligibility study is performed and a resolution passed declaring the area as deteriorated and/or a disadvantaged border community, and designate the area as appropriate for an urban renewal project. An economic feasibility study is done to assess the feasibility of the proposed urban renewal district, and that report includes job creation, public infrastructure needs, and projected valuations and increment. Idaho Code 50-2903 states the base assessed value of any revenue allocation area must not exceed at any time 10% of all taxable property within the city. As you can see from this slide, with these two urban renewal districts, we are under that 10% at 8.95%. An urban renewal plan is written with specificity and includes a detailed list of proposed public improvements within the revenue allocation area, estimated project costs, and the impact on taxing districts. Both plans have a termination date of 20 years. The agency then passes a resolution recommending approval by the city council and forwards the plan to planning and zoning. On May 14, 2021, planning and zoning found the urban renewal districts are consistent with the goals and policies found in the, in the city's 2020 comprehensive plan. Which brings us here tonight for a public hearing to present our findings for these two urban renewal districts, where you will decide whether or not to approve them. And I would like to take this time to thank you for supporting the Post Falls Urban Renewal Agency and our mission to encourage the sound economic and community improvement that enhances the overall quality of life in Post Falls. So now we'll move into the first district, the Pleasant View Urban Renewal District. I'd like to note that I've worked for the agency since 2009, and my commission has always shown interest in this area for an urban renewal district. It's an exciting opportunity for industrial jobs and to expand the Pleasant View corridor. So an eligibility study for the Pleasant View Urban Renewal District was performed by the Hudson Company and Welsh Comer. City council passed Resolution 2010 on August 18 of 2020. The boundary was revised to include the intersection at Pleasant View and Seltice Way, and the council approved Resolution 2016 on October 6, 2020. A feasibility study was done by Welsh Comer in Heartland and is included in the plan. On April 27, the agency passed Resolution 2021-01, which approved the Pleasant View District Urban Renewal Plan and Revenue Allocation Area and recommended approval by the Post Falls City Council. Planning and zoning adopted Resolution 21-03 on May 14, which found the proposed urban renewal plan conforms to the 2020 comprehensive plan. The Pleasant View Urban Renewal District consists of 600 acres of undeveloped land with a base value of $2.7 million. The agent, let's see, sorry. It is anticipated that this urban renewal district will generate approximately 2,400 jobs, and at full build-out will increase the tax base by $882 million. Projected increment from the increase in valuation is $8.2 million, which will be returned to the taxing entities upon closure. If approved tonight, the Pleasant View Urban Renewal District will terminate on June 1, 2041. And now I'll turn it over to Bob Seal, who will get into the specifics of this district.
Thanks, Dan.
Bob Seal, Community Development Director. You've only got me for this one and then one more, so. Wanted to show the timeline, as she had mentioned, we've been talking about this for a while. So this is kind of a quick timeline that you can kind of see up there, and it mostly extends from, again, May of 2020 until tonight. And it shows all the different public hearings or workshops that this process has gone through during this time, and how many times it was either noticed or ended up on a public board. The Pleasant View URD, again, the statistics and boundaries is kind of what we're looking at here. It's on the eastern side of Pleasant View, and just down to the Southeast Way intersection, just wanted to make sure that's still visible up there. It is consisting of about 25 parcels ranging in size of 4.5 acres to 68 acres. The average size is around 24 acres each. The total district size, if you just include the parcels, is about 552 acres when you actually include the right-of-way, which is what the district would be looking to include, so that the public improvements can be done within that right-of-way. It's over 600, it is 600 acres. This, again, is showing you the zoning that would be included in that district after the annexation was approved. This includes, again, the industrial zones, a commercial mix, residential mix, and industrial. And the southern corridor, minus out that little bit of CCS and the dark industrial that you just did down the southern half, those are not included within the district. The costs that add to the value of the district. So, the purpose of the urban renewal district is to help to implement public infrastructure, to get these sites online, and provide opportunity for development, focusing on job creation and commercial development. Phase one is what we're really looking at right now in order to move forward and actually get increments started, so that we can get the trans-system site online. And, again, as Diane had noted, the projected assessed value at the end of the district is approximately $884 million. Sure I can see this. So, infrastructure near term is what we're looking at here. Trying to get the Project Drive site online is the primary initiator of this development, and that was kind of shown. That's something we've discussed in different previous public hearings, talking about the fact that, you know, this was being looked, this district was being looked at 14 years ago, and it was decided it was too early. And then we came back a couple of years ago to start looking at it again, because there was interest in having this, in getting the site developed. So this is the site that we're primarily focused on. Okay, how do we get phase one infrastructure to that site? So we're looking at the water lines being constructed up Pleasant View, just beyond the railroad tracks, and up to north of Prairie, so that at least it gets to that side of Prairie over by where the Copper Basin properties are at. So that can be built out in the future. That comes in future phases. And also run the water line down Grange. In addition to that, we have to get the sewer. So the sewer line, which is actually a force main, would be constructed within that right-of-way up to and lift station that, again, would be sitting on that northeastern property of the Copper Basin, well, northeastern corner of Prairie and Pleasant View, which is on the Copper Basin site. In addition to that, we would also be looking at infrastructure improvements for the traffic on Pleasant View, and looking primarily at that Grange intersection, which is the up-and-down blue line right now that you can see there. But that's Grange, and there would be some form of traffic control at the intersection in addition to turn lanes and the acceleration lane in order to provide access onto Grange. In addition to the force main, there's also the beginning of the gravity line, I believe, for that, which then this kind of just is a long-term build-out, where you can see that you get a gravity line for sewer and the water extensions throughout the rest of the district. Again, this urban renewal district will be, benefit the public through job creation, helping to develop underutilized property. Infrastructure upgrades will enhance the capacity for the surrounding area and the community, improvements to the local transportation system, increase in local tax base to lead to lower levy rates in the future, and increase sales and income taxes, obviously, for the state, which does get, some gets passed on to the cities. Job impacts, as noted before, that the jobs, the number of jobs will be determined based on the actual industries that do come into the district. We only know of a couple specifics that will be coming into there. But based on the build-out scenarios and in the feasibility study, it was indicated that we'll have an estimated 22, over 2,200 additional jobs or around 2,400, as it was noted previously, would be created while potentially adding an additional 3,000 to 5,000 indirect or induced jobs within those different sectors. And that's actually kind of coming to the end of this, but the, but when you're looking at making a decision within the, for an urban renewal district, the hearing is to consider public testimony regarding a plan and formation of the urban renewal revenue allocation area, and the comments regarding the annexation, zoning, or land use entitlements aren't really relevant to this, and that's more a direction for any public comment that may be coming in. I just also wanted to note that if you have any questions regarding the feasibility study that is included within that plan, we do have the consultant from Heartland, Ben Wharton, is online, and I believe Matt Gillis is also here tonight. So if you have any questions to them.
Questions, Bob, at this point?
And Bob, I think we were going to leave that other slide up while...
Oh, you can do both. So I got questions with the map, and I've got, yep, there you go, too many arrows, and there you go.
I've got a couple here, right? Okay, so we've got two in favor and one opposed. So Ginny Gilliam, now's your chance.
Okay, I'm going to skip the intro and jump right into, will fully support the Pleasant View Urban Renewal District, which will provide numerous benefits for area residents, the city, North Idaho, and the state. The Pleasant View, the proposed Pleasant View URD will help create jobs to help improve people's lives, generate revenue for infrastructure improvements, and contribute to the strength of the region. There are currently three complementary projects proposed for the district that together will bring hundreds of high-paying jobs with a combined total of $75 million in annual payroll. In the past, our working population and college grads have had to leave the region. These high-paying jobs will encourage people to stay or come back, because it makes it financially feasible to do so. The proposed capital investment of $50 million translates to increases in the local tax base that can be used for roads, schools, law enforcement, fire department, wastewater, et cetera, et cetera. Creating the URD provides the mechanism for building much-needed public infrastructure in the front end. Our office receives numerous calls from local and new businesses exploring expansion options. Most are looking for sites with access to city infrastructure. In addition to property and sales taxes, businesses and their employees spend money locally. For the company, it ranges from buying raw materials to subcontracting with local companies to buying office supplies. For the workforce, it ranges from buying new homes and cars to shopping for furniture, groceries, and other goods. These are all additional economic activity that results in more jobs and tax dollars for the region. Local businesses, as you heard, also provide support through sponsorships, donations in time and money, internships, and engagements in local boards. Local businesses play an integral role in the success of communities. The businesses and job creation in the proposed URD enhances the city's ability to create a successful work, live, play environment. Additionally, growth is inevitable. Life changes, and we adapt to it. That's how we move forward as individuals, families, communities, nations, the world. That's how we've moved forward as humanity. The alternative is to decline and go backwards. Though we have a stable and diverse economy, we are not done, because the world is always changing around us. In the early '90s to now, we transitioned from solely relying on agriculture, timber, and mining, to an economy that includes manufacturing, distribution, tourism, information tech, healthcare, and others. Now we're at another crossroads, because we successfully grew to where we are now. So we move forward again. Let's trust our comprehensive plans, these dynamic plans that we adapt to what's happening around us, so we can manage the growth, mitigate the downsides, and meet the future prepared. It's like a friend said recently, it's not about being pro-growth or no-growth, it's about being proactive. The world will change and grow around us, that's a given. Let's not make the mistake now of falling behind. As a community, we want to make things better by providing excellent jobs and contributing to a thriving and diversified economy. This URD will help do that. As the Economic Development Organization for the region, we want to help the community continue to move forward, transitioning, adapting, and proactively meeting the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Also wishing to speak in favor, and Christine, I'm going to get it right this time, it's Julie Holm, Christina Petit. Usually if you give me about four times the name, I'll get it right.
Thank you so much again. So our comments are going to reflect a little bit of what we said earlier, just because the annexation kind of folds into urban renewal. But we are here today to speak in favor of the Pleasant View corridor. On behalf of the chamber and our board, I want to share that the proposed plan for public improvements along the Pleasant View corridor will open that area to our city, of our city, to light and heavy industrial development, creating good-paying jobs with benefits and diversifying our economic base, as Ginny just mentioned. This area currently, currently has road and rail connections that many manufacturing companies are seeking, and the improvements proposed in this plan include a transload facility and the extension of sewer and water infrastructure, which will greatly improve North Idaho's competitive position for new economic development. The chamber has seen the many accomplishments curated through the prudent use of urban renewal programs in our city over the past 20 years, and we do fully support the creation of this urban renewal district.
Thank you. And he left, but I would read into the record that Mr. Flowers did sign up as opposed and wishing to speak. So, now that he's not here, but we will just make that, or please include that in the record. Do we need to rebut?
One more thing for the record. One of the last steps in creating this urban renewal district, because part of the property is currently in the county, we need to have an intergovernmental agreement with, between the county, the city, and the urban renewal agency. Just wanted to make it clear for the record that this afternoon, the county did adopt Ordinance 566, which adopts and transfers the authority to manage the area that's currently in the county to the urban renewal agency until such time as it's annexed. That's later on our agenda for the city to adopt that agreement, but I wanted, in the record, that the county did take that step. And so we've completed that last additional step in order to authorize or create the ability to create the district tonight.
Okay, thank you. I don't believe we need to rebut.
We do not.
I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, would you like to start?
As many of you who follow these proceedings or my career on the council, I generally have been critical of urban renewal. However, this is what I believe to be the most legitimate purpose for it. We've got proponents coming in to create jobs that, one of them's already breaking ground, whether it was going to be on the county or in the city, it's, or in the district or not. And these are good-paying jobs. And the area wasn't developing, hasn't developed very rapidly for my entire life here. So, the urban renewal district will help, obviously, those proponents along, get those jobs here faster, and I think this is exactly what it's for.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to say, state for the record that we have the best urban renewal agency in the state. Guys have always done a great job. I've questioned sometimes about doing renewal, or urban renewal districts where we don't have a plan, and we definitely have a plan this time. So, yeah, I think it's a great deal. Thanks for all your hard work, you guys, and on the agency to bring this forward.
Steve?
I was thinking, reading through the studies that our consultants have done, they've laid everything out for us, and I think our urban renewal district has done all the investigation into it, and I say they do an excellent job, and I think it's going to fit the needs of Post Falls, and I think it's just what, what we need to get going on this project.
Go ahead.
I would just say this would be, if there are any textbook purposes for urban renewal, this one would be it. And I agree that our urban renewal agency is one that is held, not just in high regard, but held up as an example throughout the state for the effectiveness and the ability to close districts early. So, I would be, I would be in favor.
I'd like to add one comment, too, is that, are we going to use urban renewal to help fund the infrastructure to develop that area? But at the same time, in talking with staff, we will be applying for grant monies for the same, same expenses. And should the city be successful in obtaining the build grant and...
It's called the raise grant this year, but it's, it was the build grant last year.
So if we are successful in being awarded those grants, that would help us recoup the cost quicker and close the district quicker, and I'm not concerned really with you closing, not closing the district quicker, because that's what urban renewal in Post Falls has done. So, I think there are other options available, hopefully there are other options available, but I think urban renewal is critical to get this process moving forward.
I'd make a motion.
Please do.
You want an ordinance?
Excuse me, one, yeah, one quick question. We're doing this a little bit differently tonight, because the hearing is on the adoption of the ordinance, so the motion would be to approve the ordinance, and we go through the same steps we would do normally to adopt an ordinance.
And we're going to do that now? Okay. I would move to place the ordinance on adopting the Pleasant View Urban Renewal Plan and Revenue Allocation Area on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Wilson?
An ordinance of the city of Post Falls, Cootney County, Idaho, approving the Pleasant View Urban Renewal Plan, which includes revenue allocation financing provisions, authorizing the city clerk to transmit a copy of this ordinance and other required information to Cootney County and state officials, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing severability, providing for the publication of this ordinance by summary, and providing an effective date.
Move to approve the adopting the Pleasant View Urban Renewal Plan and Revenue Allocation Area to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Counsel, a quick question for you. We've got another public hearing, we've got three executive session topics. Does anyone, do you want to just push on, you want to take five or 10 minutes? Keep going. Is that okay with everyone?
Yeah.
So far, I'm surviving.
May get a request for a five-minute quick one, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Next item up tonight is the ordinance adopting the Downtown Urban Renewal Plan and Revenue Allocation Area. Thanks, folks. With that, I'll open the public hearing.
Thank you. Again, an eligibility study for the Downtown Urban Renewal District was performed by JUB Engineers. City council passed Resolution 19-06 on July 6, 2019. A feasibility study was done by the Metz Group and is included in the plan. On April 27, 2021, the agency passed Resolution 2021-02 approving the Downtown District Urban Renewal Plan and Revenue Allocation Area and recommended approval by the Post Falls City Council. Planning and zoning adopted Resolution 21-02 on May 14, which found that the proposed Downtown Urban Renewal Plan conforms with the 2020 comprehensive plan. The Downtown District consists of 548 acres with a base value of $182 million. It is anticipated that the Downtown Urban Renewal District will create, will generate approximately 1,200 jobs, and at full development, will increase the tax base by $289 million, and the projected increment from the increase in valuation is $2.7 million, which will be returned to the taxing entities upon closure. If approved tonight, the Downtown Urban Renewal District will terminate on June 1, 2041.
Bob Seal.
Bob Seal, Community Development Director, back again. All right, so, as she noted, we've been working on... Institute on the creation of downtowns, and what that really looks like, and what that can, how that can work within an urban renewal district. The boundaries were looked at and established during the eligibility study and feasibility study process, and as you can see here, this encompasses the downtown area and then some. So we have Seltice that runs through this area here, across the freeway, and on. When we were working on these boundaries, it also kind of came in with, in concert with the city center master plan update, or addendum that was recently done, in which they kind of looked at many projects, as well as looking at the city or the downtown area with specific type of nodes within it, kind of looking at this area around Spokane Street, at the Idaho veneer site in Idaho, and then up within the Seltice and Spokane Street corridor. So while it's a larger downtown, they're looking at it as nodes, really kind of helped connect those and kind of create the cohesiveness that you would anticipate within a downtown area. There is a variety of zoning and land uses within the proposed district. Community commercial services make up 104 acres of land. The limited commercial makes up seven acres. Industrial, there's 13.7 acres currently within the zone. High industrial, or sorry, there is some high industrial in a certain area. It's an old legacy zone that is no longer, besides being within the zoning code and on current land uses. You can't get that anymore. There is some R3, approximately 35 acres, and then you've got a variety of acreage associated with the different smart code, SC3, SC4, and SC5. Again, this kind of just shows the breakout, and you can see that the majority of the land use is SC5 and CCS, both of which allow for commercial types of developments within this area. Project costs within downtown area, primarily, again, with this, with this downtown district, we are looking at how to implement a tier-one projects first. And throughout the development within here, there is anticipation of increasing assessed value to the end of the district to full build out at $289 million. Again, this is kind of a conservative outlook, as the Metz Group had noted, had noted during that process. And I wanted to show you some of the, again, some of the infrastructure projects that were listed within the plan, both, it's actually in the city center master plan addendum, as well as in the feasibility study. Again, it's not necessarily that we will do just tier-one infrastructure projects, there may be a need or a desire to move tier two, or three, or four even, within to that tier one to fund those instead. It just kind of depends on how development continues. This was the best guesstimate as to how development was going to proceed at this time. Again, a lot of stuff can change in the future, but we anticipate, you know, obviously the Idaho veneer site, moving along the landing site, developing improvements along Forest Street, and potentially up at the Seltice Mullen Corridor area. So this is kind of stuff that played into coming up with this tier, tiered approach. But again, it's not that we're stuck within the tier one, we could potentially draw within tier two or three, four, if it's determined that those are needed prior to it. However the increment comes in, is how the Urban Renewal District ultimately spends that funding in order to implement the public improvement projects. Again, the public benefits for an urban renewal district such as this, we're looking at job creation, because it's the downtown, we're looking at encouraging that compatible infill development and redevelopment of vacant or underutilized properties. Infrastructure upgrades will enhance the capacity of the surrounding area and the downtown community character. Improvements to the local street network and pedestrian and bike connectivity, obviously increase the local tax base, lead to lower levy rates, and increase sales and income taxes, potentially for the state as well as local. Job impacts, the number of jobs will be determined based on actual industry demands, based on the various build-out scenarios in the downtown district. They're estimating approximately 1,013 direct jobs to be created, while potentially adding 162 indirect or induced jobs in other sectors. Potential tax revenue, tax increment revenue, the downtown district has a potential to generate between 1.7 to 2.7 million each year, depending upon the actual build-out. And again, the build-out is a conservative nature, however, we still want to be even more conservative looking at that. So seeing where it's going to be at over that 20-year life. And so the estimate is that the district is estimated to generate between 19.2 and $29.4 million in tax increment in that 20-year period. And again, if there was public testimony, it's primarily related, or it should be related to the urban renewal area, and not related to city center master plan or the smart code or zoning or land use issues within the area. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions, Bob.
And just as, again, as a reminder, we do happen to have Matt Gillis from Welsh Comer and Olivia Metz from the Metz Group available for any questions related to the feasibility study that is within your bracket.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Wishing to speak in favor, either again, or Julie Holt and Christina Petit?
Oh, she's going solo.
So again, on behalf of our chamber and our Board of Directors, we are in, very much in support of the Downtown Urban Renewal District. In fact, I'm particularly excited about that we get a ton of visitors and residents coming in and asking where downtown is and looking for places to gather, and these improvements that are planned will help make the city center, it'll incorporate a number of needed things like sidewalks, street improvement, public parking, infrastructure upgrades, and it'll create that community vibe that we're looking for downtown. And so we're very excited about that and support that. It will enrich the lives of our citizens and our visitors, so thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. In opposition is Bill Van Valkenburg. My wife and I have lived in this neighborhood for 39 years. We have witnessed many mostly positive changes in Post Falls over the years. This is the first time we have ever felt that we have to play defense against our own city government. Over the past year, we have witnessed our immediate neighbors being assaulted because our city officials have allowed three-story apartments to be built adjacent to and across the street from their homes. These buildings have blocked their views and eliminated their eastern and southern sun exposure. One of the buildings has unscreened balconies looking directly into their formerly private backyard. The city's recommendation for this, question mark, still allow the three-story buildings, but move the setback over five more feet and put some trees in between. They still have the sun, views, and privacy loss. This was brought up at this time as one of the many reasons we have lost faith in and fear our local representatives. We do not want an U R D in our neighborhood who has the power to impose fees, taxes on the current residents to complete a vision. We do not want an authority who has the power of eminent domain and the ability to take by one's private property and give it another entity for the greater good. This may not be the intention, but it is a power the U R D possesses, and after listening to our commissioners and council members, we have no doubt it will be used in the future. We and our neighbors want to live in peace in our homes and not be taxed out, lot out, or bullied out of them. We are Post Falls residents, human beings, and not just lots, as one of our city planners has referred to us. Please treat us as such. Thank you. Any rebuttal?
Bob Seal, Community Development Director. Again, a lot of that was related to the zoning within downtown area, so this doesn't really come into play here, and we have, you know, obviously begun to look at various setback requirements and land use design for the apartment type of complexes and multifamily developments. In addition, I don't believe that the Urban Renewal District, our Urban Renewal District has ever used eminent domain, but it's certainly not the intention of the plan. The plan is not established that way. The plan is working towards the implementation of a city center master plan, which does focus primarily upon improvements within the right-of-way park improvements, street scape and things along those lines, so.
One quick aside, this year, the legislature passed an amendment to the urban rule laws
that requires the Urban Renewal Agency can't exercise urban or eminent domain on their own, they have to go through the local elected officials, so it's, it's not, it hasn't happened, it's likely almost never going to happen, but it would have to be done in conjunction with the city.
Thank you. Questions, Bob, for closed public hearing? Close that public hearing. Counsel. Who'd you like to start?
Sure, okay, what the heck. This one's been really tough for me, because I think, like a lot of longtime residents, we'd like to see a downtown, although I even kind of vacillate back and forth on that one, because it's a really good one, you know, 15 minutes that way, over in our neighboring town. But I think urban renewal needs to come down to the but-for test. Would it develop but for urban renewal? And in the case of the Pleasant View Corridor that we talked about earlier today, I haven't seen much developer, development out there in my entire life. We look around downtown right now, and we see development happening everywhere. So I don't think we need any extra incentive to encourage further development, it's going to happen on its own. So in this case, as tough as it is for me, I'm not inclined to support it.
I'm not, I'm not nearly as excited about this one as I was about Pleasant View. I echo a lot of the things that Joe has said. I guess I've come around a little bit more, just the fact that we do need a plan, and I am hopeful that this one works, because it doesn't seem like the last one worked very well, so. Be in favor, but not all that excited.
Second time's a charm on this, and I just want you to know that in 31 years, I will
be 100 years old, and I have wanted to see the city center developed in my lifetime. And this is likely one of the best opportunities to have that happen.
So you're guaranteeing you'll stay around that long, right?
Yeah. I ain't going nowhere till we hit the downtown.
Linda.
Well, I would kind of echo the same thing that Carrie just said. I have been waiting for a downtown my whole life, and I think I'm older than she is, I'm not quite sure, but...
Oh, bless your heart. Anyway.
No, you're not. Sorry.
I was really disappointed in the, in the last urban renewal district downtown and how it turned out, but I also have to look back and know that a big part of that reason was a downturn in the real estate market. So I am going to be in favor of this and, and hope for the best, and really encourage everyone to really watch the, I know it's not part of this, to really watch the design of some of the S4, S3 and S4 buildings in the future.
Steve.
Well, I'm excited about this one. When I ran for council three years ago, I beat on a lot of doors, and a lot of people asked me, if I asked them, what would you like to see? And I heard from a lot of people, a downtown, because nobody could identify what the downtown was, and I'd said, well, I've been to a few council meetings. Before I ran, the last one was, we talked about downtown and actually kind of started this process. So I'm excited about this one, because I think we have so much more opportunities with Idaho veneer, moving all that property, there's going to be questions on the railroad property. So I think an urban renewal district, too, just spurs businesses coming in, because they know the town is interested in making these improvements and willing to put in the time and the tax dollars to help these companies develop downtown. So I think, again, hands off to our two consultants, I think they've covered all of our concerns that we've had, both financially and design-wise, and I think it's, this one goes to 2041, I hope it happens before then, so. But I think it's, it's, it's a good plan, and again, thank you, staff, it's a lot of time and work to put into these, and kept this up to date all the way along.
Well, I'm just happy that we have a good plan now. I think with the staff being behind the plan pretty much, and doing their homework, I think we have a better basis to move something forward at this point than we had the last go-around, and so I support it, and I look forward to some positive growth in the area.
I think when the first plan came out, there was very grandiose ideas and did not come to fruition, the financial wherewithal was not there to help it happen, and hopefully this one will be a different story, and we will see a successful redevelopment of this whole area, so I would also be in support, but I would entertain a motion.
I would move to place the ordinance adopting the Downtown Urban Renewal Plan and Revenue Allocation Area on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Shannon, please take the roll.
Borders?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Nay.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Wilson.
An ordinance of the city of Post Falls, Cootney County, Idaho, approving the Downtown Urban Renewal Plan, which includes revenue allocation financing provisions, authorizing the city clerk to transmit a copy of this ordinance and other required information to Cootney County and state officials, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing severability, providing for the publication of this ordinance by summary, and providing an effective date.
Move to approve the ordinance adopting the Downtown Urban Renewal Plan and Revenue Allocation Area, and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, discussion? Roll call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Nay.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item up is unfinished business, returning ordinances and resolution, we have one resolution, the fiscal year 2021 fee resolution.
And I would move to approve the resolution, fiscal year 2021 fee resolution.
Second.
Motion second, discussion? Roll call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Nay.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item up is unfinished business, returning ordinances and resolution, we have one resolution, the fiscal year 2021 fee resolution.
And I would move to approve the resolution, fiscal year 2021 fee resolution.
Second.
Motion second, discussion? Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. New business is up next, and we have the Pleasant View District Intergovernmental Agency, intergov, yes, we do. Pleasant View District Intergovernmental Agreement between Cootney County, Post Falls, Idaho, and the Post Falls Urban Renewal Agency.
Unless you want more from me, it's, that's just the final step in, in putting together the three-party agreement to make the Pleasant View District work.
And that's the information you provided prior to the meeting.
I would move to approve the Pleasant View District Intergovernmental Agreement between Cootney County, Post Falls, and the Post Falls Urban Renewal Agency.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is citizens' issue, and this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. I think they all left.
They all were here.
I had to read it. And Bob Seal, we don't want to hear from you again, so.
He knows that, he left.
Following the administrative staff report, and that is Water Rights Intervention Update.
Good evening, John Beecham, Public Works Director. I hope you guys enjoyed the exciting presentations. This one is about 30 minutes long and not very exciting. Just kidding. It's about to have a heart, about that five-minute period.
We discussed a break.
In May of 2020, we brought to you a question of whether we should intervene in a water rights matter in southern Idaho. The title of that matter is on the screen, but I'm not going to read the whole thing. In short, the city of Nampa previously discharged their wastewater to Indian Creek, and where it was then, some of it was reused by Riverside Irrigation. Nampa wanted instead to discharge their wastewater to Phyllis Canal, and then via an agreement with a different irrigation district, it would be used for water reuse. And they believed that that was allowable under state law. This is a very similar diagram of what we would like to do in the future, which is remove our wastewater from the Spokane River, which has downstream users, and do something else with it through reuse to meet N P D E S permitting requirements. with it through reuse to meet NPDES permitting requirements. So our interest was basically, we want to support the right of city of Post Falls and other cities in the state to do this and preserve our own flexibility and basically ensure that pathway is there when we need it. With that, we did intervene, we spent a grand total of about $2,700 in legal fees and the outcome was the successful conclusion for the interveners, for us as well as for the city of Nampa. Basically this conclusion states the state law as it exists is, as we understood it, Idaho Department of Water Resources, is not going to change that in a way that negatively affects us. Our water rights attorney said this is great news for cities as it preserves the law as written. So I wanted to bring that back to you so you knew what the outcome was. It's not a grand conclusion or anything super exciting, but we were successful in our endeavor and it didn't cost us a whole lot of money.
Excellent. Thanks, John. I remember you bringing it forward and we didn't know what it was going to lead to, so that is good news.
Thank you.
Good. Mayor and council comments? You know, I want to publicly thank the council, I want to thank planning, zoning, and I want to thank urban renewal. We're going to see our meetings get a bit longer. Planning and zoning have seen their meetings become more frequent and much longer. A lot of negativity out there and especially for the volunteer boards and commissions and I really appreciate their time and dedication. I think staff, I'd like to thank the staff because I know we have more and more public hearings, that means it's more and more staff time. Again, it's not that we're out soliciting people to move here, people are coming and we've got to be proactive and plan for it and I think our staff has done a very good job. So I just want to publicly thank all of you here, the staff, council, and planning, zoning and urban renewal for the work you've done to help us move along and handle the growth that we've encountered. Council comments?
I do. I would like to thank the Parks Department and the Cemetery Department for the beautiful Memorial Day ceremony at Evergreen Cemetery. The American Legion did a beautiful job, the cemetery just looks beautiful, it was very, very nice ceremony. I would also like to apologize to Chief Knight for my comments at the last meeting where I was questioning him about the police cars and where he got them. I was totally out in front of my skis and I don't know anything about cars and I do apologize for that, chief. I already did apologize to him, but I thought about that for several days and I knew I was out of line, so I apologize.
Carrie?
Well, I'm not going to apologize to the chief, but I'm sure I probably owe you an apology for something, but what I wanted to say is over the weekend at Corbin Park, gratefully not a tragedy, but so easily could have been with four people falling out of whatever conveyance they were on in the river at Corbin and three of them made it out. One of them was rescued. Chief Knight, was that a sheriff's deputy or was that a Post Falls Police Officer? Someone went in the water.
Our officers were in there, I know that one of our officers took off their boot belt to go in the water. I don't know who was the rescue side of things, so.
Yeah, well, I would like to know at some time, but that is, it is very well posted, so there was a lot of debate, you know, about why we don't close Corbin Park, why we don't have signage. There is signage, there are several large signs, the only thing they don't have is a skull and crossbones, but it says danger, rip current, does it say swimming not advised or at your own risk?
Not advised, hazardous waters.
Yeah, but there are, I think, seven of them along the shoreline, every place you have access. So there's no shortage of warning signs. The water temperature on the lake and in the river on Monday, which would be yesterday, was 55 degrees, which is only 20-some degrees more warmer than ice. So going in the water at this time, I just prevail on people because Corbin, there were two lives lost there last summer. And no matter the circumstances, it's a tragedy. So please just use some sense and read the signs in our parks because they're wonderful signs and they're well-placed.
Well, you brought it up, but I was thinking about this today too. There's a lot of contentious issues that face our city, our region, our state, our country, and people have gotten themselves very polarized. I see this every day and, you know, I just, I want the public to know that, you know, we try to do our best we can for Post Falls for what's going on. You know, we do our homework, we listen to the studies, we listen to the experts before we weigh these decisions. Somebody said it earlier, there's much more going on before the actual public hearing when we make these decisions, you know, and these are tough decisions. It would be easier to just sit up here and abstain. Somebody's got to say yea or nay and we don't always agree, but I just hope that people understand that when they do come forward and we do listen to them, we know these things affect people in different ways. They may have more cars going down their road or they may lose some vista or sightlines that they used to have, but these, you know, we're trying to do our best for the community and I applaud the staff who's, you know, still here. Everybody's gone home, but you guys are still here and you make our jobs easier because you do prepare us so well so that when we're up here, we can make those decisions whether we always agree with each other or not. Thank you.
We do need executive session for three topics and Linda, if you could maybe.
I can do it.
Can we do it just by code or do we have to read the whole thing?
Got to read the whole thing.
I would move to enter into an executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74-2061A to consider hiring a public officer, employee, staff member or individual agent as well as Idaho Code 74-2061F to communicate with legal counsel for the public agency to discuss the legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated but intimately likely to be litigated and Idaho Code 74-2061C to acquire an interest in real property which is not owned by a public agency. Furthermore, that no action will be taken, the session will last approximately 30 minutes.
Second.
Thought I might die for lack of a second. More Shannon, second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhun?
Aye.
Motion passes, we'll enter executive.[1102.91]